Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to, what am I calling it?
Order.
Order, thank you. May I please have a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge of Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, as stated in Virginia law that only such public matters that were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, can I have a second?
Second.
Excellent, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sorza will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Thank you, now will you call the roll for attendance?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Onby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
May I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Young, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sorza will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
That brings us to announcements and superintendent's report, Dr. Heron.
Good evening, Madam Chair, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week from May 7th through May 11th, and this evening we want to say a heartfelt thank you to all of our WJCC teachers. Teachers give so much to our students, inspiration, motivation, and ultimately their futures. Teachers change the lives of millions of children every day and their work impacts and extends far beyond the boundaries of the classroom. During Teacher Appreciation Week, please take an opportunity to thank a teacher for all they do for our students. Also tomorrow is National Nurses Day. School nurses ensure our students are safe, healthy, and ready to learn, and we really appreciate the great they work, the work they do for us in WJCC schools, so thank you to our nurses as well. Matthew Whaley Elementary School is the 2018 Virginia Imagine Language and Literacy Cup State Champion, and close on their heels was Laura Lane Elementary with a second place finish. Imagine Language and Literacy is a program that includes both a computer adaptive component for highly individualized instruction and instructional materials and interventions for teachers to use with students. WJCC piloted Imagine Language and Literacy last summer and expanded its use in October of this year. Congratulations to Matthew Whaley and Laura Lane students and teachers. If you missed our kindergarten registration this week, don't worry, you can still register your kindergarten student at any time during regular school hours. We encourage families to register their students early so that we can adequately staff our elementary schools for all of our new arrivals next year. For more information about registration, please visit wjccschools.org. Warhild English teacher Cory Williams has been named a Teacher Representative to the Virginia Advisory Committee for the Education of the Gifted. This committee provides the Virginia State Board of Education and the Superintendent of Public Instruction with guidance about the educational needs of students identified as gifted. The committee is composed of representatives from school divisions, professional organizations, colleges, businesses and industry, and parents, Ms. Williams will serve a three-year term on the committee, so congratulations to Ms. Williams. Finally, I would like to extend our heartfelt sympathy to the family of Toano Middle School's sixth grade student Noah Gallegos. Noah was a cherished member of the Toano Middle School family, and he will be greatly missed, and our hearts go out to everyone. I also want to thank all of our staff from all over the system, and especially at Toano, who worked together and were an incredible team working in support of the students and teachers and family there, so thank you, everyone. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, Mrs. Young?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity of attending the School Division CTE Advisory Committee, and one of the things that I highlighted is that there's an opportunity in this year's program of studies for our students who can participate in a program that's called Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, and they can sign up for that, I think that is actively going on right now, and would encourage any student who is interested in pursuing education as a career to participate in that. The other thing is, I attended the CTN Symposium in Hampton, and they had excellent resources, the main focus that I thought came out of that, that choosing a trade is a viable thing for today's students, and one of the statistics that came out is by 2020, that's only two years away, is there's going to be five million jobs in the United States that are going to be unfilled because we are not training our young people. And they had an amazing speaker named Matthew B. Crawford, and any of you that are interested in reading his book, it's called Shop Class as Soul Craft, and he has a doctorate, but he owns a motorcycle shop in Richmond, Virginia. I was very impressed with him, and one of the things he talked about is that working with your hands helps you become directly responsible for your own physical being, and I think we're, he showed us a picture of a car, and like if you lift the hood, there's another hood, and you have to be an expert. And he was encouraging people to do things with their hands, and that being a skilled manual trade is a life worth living, and it's a viable thing. So I'm excited about CTE, and I'm happy with the way our division is going, and want to continue to support that, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Young, are there any other announcements? Hearing none, that brings us to citizens' comments, if I understand, there are no speaker cards. Okay, with that, we will move to proposed agenda items. First is 6.01 School Bus Replacement Purchase, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Snipes is going to present this item this evening about the purchase of a replacement school bus. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
School Board Chair, members and Dr. Heron. Tonight, we would like to present you a proposed agenda item for a school bus purchase to a replacement of a school bus that was involved in an accident. Our vendor, Sonny Merriman, who is under state contract, is the approved vendor, and the cost for this replacement bus is $108,460. We received approximately close to half of that, which is $55,278 from the insurance company, and the remaining amount will be transferred from the fuel budget for the replacement of the bus.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes, any questions?
Why do we have to vote on this?
Because it's over, why do we have to vote on this, Mr. Snipes?
The buses.
Even though we got money from the insurance company, it's all.
Barnes is nodding.
Then it must be true.
So, yeah, for the viewing public, it's because it's over $100,000 per our policy. Okay. Thank you, item 6.02 School Bus Purchase for Opening of James Blair Middle School.
The FY19 Capital Improvement Plan proposed five buses for the opening of the fourth middle school, which is James Blair Middle School. Again, a state-approved contract for Sonny Merriman, and the cost of, each bus will cost $8,406, which will bring our operational bus total to 130. The total cost for the five buses is $542,030, and $545,000 was included in the FY19 CIP budget. Again, this is a placeholder agenda item based on approval of the county budget and your adopted budget.
So tonight, the county is taking action on their budget, and then we will do so at the next, the second meeting this month, and then at this point, so we would vote on this after we adopt our budget, then those funds appear. Okay, any questions for Mr. Snipes? Mr. Kelly?
So, the last one was replacement, so it's out of operating funds, these are expansions to our fleet, so they're out of the capital funds.
That is correct.
Anything else? I would just like to comment that if, that this is in the proposed CIP, and if James City County had not been in a position to have additional revenue this year, this is one of the items that would have been removed. So we're very lucky to be able to expand the fleet in order to accommodate opening new schools, assuming that the votes take place tonight, next Tuesday. Anything else? Okay, that brings us to 6.03 Purchase of Elementary and High School Student Devices, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Landers is going to present one of our annual refresh technology items this evening and provide you some information. Mr. Landers.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. With this item, we're asking for your consideration and approval of purchasing elementary and high school student-use tablets, desktops, and laptops as part of the technology refresh program. Specifically, this request is to purchase one, 1,326 tablets for elementary use, 360 desktops and monitors for elementary school labs, and 200 high school student laptops. The total amount of the purchase is $527,452, and we will use the state contract with Lenovo for the purchase. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Landers? Yeah, Onby?
So, the laptops that will be purchased for the high schools, those are for specific programs in the high schools? Pathways, Link 5, Concourse 9?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's not for general use, then?
These are to be targeted to specific use, yes, ma'am.
Programs, okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That brings us to item 7.01 Equity Through Engagement: A School View of MTSS Beginning Implementation, Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we're pleased tonight to bring you another, in fact, the last of our series this year of Equity Through Engagement, and the purpose this evening is to really give you a sense of how MTSS is being implemented in two of our schools, and Ms. Bourgeois is here to introduce the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. Thank you for this opportunity to provide information regarding WJCC's continued implementation of a multi-tiered system of supports. This evening, you will hear directly from two of our schools who will provide examples of what MTSS implementation looks like for their staff and students.
I mean, it doesn't help.
Right button is using the wrong. It went too far. It's not letting me go back.
It's back.
There we go.
Sweet.
Sorry. Sure. Call me doing that. That would be fun. It would be.
I'm on to clock. It's back too.
Whatever, is the board okay if we switch and do the James Blair Middle School update first, and then come back to MTSS? Okay, with your permission, we'll do that, Dr. Heron. We'll see you in a bit, Ms. Bourgeois.
Madam Chair, Mr. Snipes is going to introduce our guests this evening, are going to be giving us an update on the James Blair Middle School to let us know how we're moving along in this very important project, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, as you are aware, in March 2016, the board awarded the Construction Management Services for the new middle school to MBP. Representatives from MBP are here this evening, as well as President of the General Contractor Oyster Point Construction Company, Mr. Hugh Riley. Tonight, we will be giving an update from Mr. Jatsik, James Jatsik, who is with MBP, and Eric Kalma, who is also with MBP.
Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, members of the board, as Marcel said, we're just going to give a brief update of where we are, if I can get this to work. I've been wondering if that made a difference. Operating, sorry, a keyboard, that's.
This is working.
Okay. Pressure.
There we go.
All right, so just a very quick overview of the project, just a few quick facts on it, 109,000 square feet, 18-acre site. Of course, it's a 600-student middle school. It has some core facilities that have been designed for future expansion to 900 students, and there is also an accompanying design that could be implemented once, you know, that decision is made at some point in the future. Some limited site work, parking, of course, for buses, staff parking, some new ball fields, the turn lanes, we've been working with City of Williamsburg, but they're actually administering the project that will be taking place out here on the roadway for the turn lanes. And you probably saw the utility relocations that took place recently that was associated with that work. Some of the neat features about the school, it really is designed with 21st-century education concepts in mind, a lot of flexibility for different kind of student activities, group activities are built into the school, a lot of flexibility, and we have some photos, some of those spaces are taking shape very nicely now, so we'll be showing some photos of that in a moment. Mobile lockers kind of add to that ability for flexibility. Wall talkers, which is essentially a very, kind of like a wall-to-ceiling whiteboard, where a lot of kind of student exercises and things could take place within the classrooms. Advanced AV systems, Mr. Landers has been supporting efforts on that, and also a shared stage between the cafeteria and gymnasium, another neat feature of the facility. So, just start off with the budget before we dive into things. Since the last time we gave an update, we have had a few additional change orders. Most of those have been related to some enhancements that were done to the science rooms, program enhancements for those rooms. We're sitting at about 1.39% in change orders, so that's the value of the change orders to the overall construction contract. Usually when you're budgeting for a new construction project, you're usually budgeting 5%, so in kind of industry standard terms, we feel pretty good about where we're sitting. Our goal, of course, is always to have 0% change orders, but we know there are going to be some change orders, but relatively speaking, it's a pretty low percentage, and we don't, at this stage in the project, we don't see a lot more change order growth, we think a lot of the larger type changes are behind us at this point with just a few months remaining in construction. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Eric to walk us a little bit through some of the progress over the last few months.
All right, thank you, Jim. So this is kind of where we started, you can see where the left side of the photograph is the current central office, and the right side was the portion of the building that was raised. This is a photograph from back in the fall of 2017. You can see in the upper right, you have Cooley Field, and moving towards the central office, you have the bus loop, the new school building, the central office, and then down towards the bottom, you'll see where there's some parking as well as student drop-off, or the parent drop-off area. So, this is where we're going, so here's, again, you have the new school to the right and the central office to the left. Here's a first-floor plan of the building. The upper right is the classroom hub, has six classrooms, the science lab, as well as some teacher workspace. And then the bottom right is the admin area, which above it on the second floor is the research commons. The bottom left, the darker plum color, is your music and theater, and then the upper left is your gymnasium, auditoria, and food service area. So, there's a rendering on the left of the classroom area, the classroom hub. You can see where there's three classrooms to the upper left. The center purple area is the open collaboration space, and then there's three classrooms on the bottom right. And in the photograph to the right, you can see what the current condition is. We have ceiling grid in place, all the light fixtures are there, and they're actually operational at this point. The walls have been primed and have one coat of paint on them, and the flooring has been delivered to the site, so we're pretty close to actually installing the floors. And here's a couple photographs and renderings of the auditoria. The top portion, we're standing on the stage, looking through the auditoria towards the gathering stairs, and where the red portion is, the brick, is the elevator. And the bottom portion is, we're standing near the front entrance, the gathering stairs is just on the left, and we're looking through the auditoria to the stage. North elevation of the classrooms, you can see we're pretty close to being right there with the rendering. We've got brick on the first two floors, the top floor is clad in metal panels. And you also notice in the center that there's a large full-height curtain-wall window system. Here's the student entrance, and this comes off the bus loop. Pretty close, we've got the framing installed, and they'll soon be putting on the metal cladding. A little bit more on the building finishes, the photograph to the right, you can see the classroom area is on the right-hand side, and the admin and research commons is on the left. Everything in the yellow will be covered with metal panels, and then the opening, the large opening towards the top left, will be a window system as well. So there's plenty of natural light going into the research commons. Top-left picture is the third-floor science lab, and that's the casework that's already been installed. And then the bottom left is the gymnasium. As you can see, we've already got the paint and a lot of the equipment actually installed. And here's, oh, very good, we got a more recent photograph, haven't seen this yet. So this is the current state, you can see we have a highly reflective roof, and just the general state of the site work. We've resumed site work with putting in a lot of the sidewalks, and they're currently starting to grade the ball fields, and we'll move them right along back with the site work. HVA startup, the mechanical system has fallen a little bit behind schedule, and what we've done is we've required the subcontractors, project manager, to attend our progress meetings, and they have committed to some interim milestone dates, and have adjusted their staffing to make sure that we do meet those milestone dates. And we're also monitoring the progress of the work and the manpower on a daily basis. The school will open on time in September.
Was that again?
Can you repeat that?
Writing and signatures and everything. Some of the milestone dates, Notice to Proceed was in October 2016. As you're coming down, you can see November of 2017, we began the installing the roof system. In April of this year, we started with the millwork and casework installation. This month, we do anticipate having the mechanical system started up and running, and in August 2018, substantial completion is scheduled. All right, do we have any questions?
Yes.
So, substantial completion in August, we start September, so I'd like to see the bullet point that says like completion in September, is that right?
Well, it's substantial completion is when the building is, can be used for its intended purpose. And between that and final completion is where they're finishing some miscellaneous work and maybe some minor touch-up. That will be in September, the final completion, but any work that has to be done when school starts will be done after hours, so we don't impact.
Occupancy.
So it's a little bit like moving into a house and having a punch list, that they're still coming back to do all those little things and make sure it's perfect, and that takes, that can take some more time, but the building is still usable, and students and teachers will be in the building.
Yeah, so everything will be functioning, all your systems will be functioning, including the mechanical system, the plumbing system, so you have operating restrooms, and then as well as life safety. So that's fire alarms, sprinkler systems, egress, that, so the building can be used and it can be occupied once we get the certificate of occupancy. So essentially, you've got a complete building, it's just some tidying up to do.
A couple more questions. So my second question is, can you, when you look at the roof difference between the reflective roof, you said, and I'm looking at the green roof that we have here, how much of a, I'm assuming there's a real cost savings?
Yeah, you get a reflective surface, so it does save you in the mechanical systems, the cost of maintenance.
It's not absorbing heat from the sun, and there's some industry data about that, we can share that with.
Oh, no, I just, I just was like comparing it to like the building right next door, so. And then my third question is, if you could just kind of explain, I think it's at the forefront of everyone's mind, is student security, and just if you could just explain a little bit about any of the security features of the school, especially around the entrance?
Well, the main entrance, you have to be buzzed in, it's just kind of like coming into the annex or the central office. So there's a camera system, and you have to be physically buzzed in once, and once you enter into that vestibule, the only direction you can go is to the office, so there's another set of secure doors.
So there's a, basically, what?
You have to, you have to meet a staff member to proceed any further. You have to, you have to meet a staff member to proceed any further.
Dr. Beers.
Yeah, I understand that a certain date for the students, when are teachers going to be able to get in there? Because they generally want to get in a couple of weeks before school opens for the students.
Substantial completion, yeah, substantial completion is August 13th. And typically, at that time, a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate is also issued by the city. And at that point, staff can actually legally occupy the building. So on the 14th, we anticipate. Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's a good hard date and the contractor is diligently working to meet all these deadlines.
My question isn't so much for you as for Mr. Snipes. I assume Mr. Snipes said there'll be a lot of furniture that needs to be put together, is that correct?
We have, we have addressed with our furniture suppliers and people who are delivering the furniture, that they deliver it assembled, but we do have places that we will be assembling furniture. But I believe most of it will be assembled when it arrives. Because our maintenance staff, we don't have enough maintenance staff to put together that much furniture.
In August.
And that, from August 1st to.
Could we help?
Oh, you're more than welcome to help. I'll go to Home Depot and buy your toolkit.
And the sheet, you know, you do one, two, three, and.
Okay, so most of the furniture is going to come assembled, so there will be furniture in the rooms for kids when they get there?
Yes.
And desks and et cetera for teachers?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to hold you to that. I know where to find you.
Oh, yeah, I know. I've sat on a committee with Ms. Barnes and Mr. Harris and some other faculty members about getting furniture and making sure it's installed. The issue is getting, making sure we don't get it until a certain time because we don't have storage for it at this time. We can only store it at the school.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Are you going to put the furniture in before your COP? You can do some of that, can't you, before you get your certificate of occupancy? Yeah?
Yeah, certain supplies and we do have, we do have certain deliveries that are going to happen before substantial completion, and the contractor's working on providing some areas that they'll release early.
Okay, can, can you just get us a spreadsheet for the change orders, just the, what each change order was and the percentage? I'd also like to get on the calendar sometime a tour with us and our funding partners to, like we did back when it was all muddy and rebar was out, just to get that, get that look.
It's still a little muddy.
I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is. But yeah, very excited about it. Glad it's August 13th, give our teachers plenty of time to get in and get adjusted and get accustomed to the space, so I appreciate that.
I get lost.
Welcome to tour.
In addition to tour, are we going to have a, some sort of ceremony, opening ceremony?
Yes, I believe that will happen after we're in the building. We'll have a proper opening ceremony and just celebrate the opening. And as soon as we have a date for that, we will, we'll put it on everyone's calendar.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Madam Chair, I think we're back to MTSS again, and Ms. Bergerot is re-entering.
It's so exciting, we're going to tell you about it again. Good evening, good everyone. Let me begin with a quick review of how the MTSS framework supports students academically, behaviorally, and emotionally. MTSS is a systematic process designed to coordinate all aspects of our work towards most effectively addressing the needs of each of our students. Tier one includes the universal or school-wide interventions in place for all students. Behaviorally, this includes school-wide expectations, a common vocabulary, and consistency in the meanings of words such as respect or disrespect. Tier two has targeted interventions to meet the needs of some students who are not successful with only the use of universal tier one interventions. Examples of tier two interventions being used by many of our schools include check-in and check-out, small group instruction, and social skills groups. The tier three interventions are intensive and designed for a small number of students and include interventions such as individualized behavioral plans. Implementation of the MTSS framework is led by school-based teams who use their school data to inform their process. Let's hear from the school level what MTSS is.
MTSS is where we kind of look at our school and look at, you know, some of the issues, either behaviorally or just as a school, structurally, and try to figure out how to fix those issues and also come together with a bunch of schools and see what they're doing and get ideas and just how to make the school run more smoothly.
In a good school, there's a lot of amazing things that go on in every single classroom. And if you stood in the hallways, you wouldn't know what was going on in every single classroom. MTSS is a way to list, to know, to identify all the things that are going on in all the classrooms. Does it get all of it? No, but it's the best approach that we have to know what's going on in the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeterias at all times.
In order to be effective, each tier is implemented through a four-phase process. The exploratory phase involves learning, analyzing data, and initial planning. All of our schools have worked through this phase. The second phase is installation. This phase focuses on identifying the common expectations that will be taught and reinforced school-wide and professional development for staff regarding MTSS and the common expectations. Beginning implementation, the third phase, is where you will currently find the majority of our schools. This phase involves the rollout or initial implementation of the universal expectations and practices for the school. Finally, the fourth phase is implementation, which occurs when the universal practices and expectations are being used consistently throughout the school. Schools also begin working to plan and implement their tier two and tier three strategies. As you can see, the implementation process is purposeful and takes the time needed to ensure successful implementation. Three of our schools are in full implementation for tier one behavioral interventions and have started implementation of tier two and tier three. At DJ Montague, they have held quarterly celebrations for students who receive less than three minor infractions and no major infractions for a marking period. Activities have included a school dance party, movie and popcorn, a stop, drop, and play day, and the next one will be a magician. For Matthew Whaley, the school MTSS team used their data to identify a need to address safe and respectful interactions on the school bus. The Ride with Pride program was initiated to align with the Patriot Pride expectations for students to be safe, respectful, responsible, and hardworking on the bus. Implementation included meeting with the drivers to get input on how the school could support them in a meaningful way, meeting with students, creating a staff video to demonstrate examples and non-examples of appropriate behavior, and recognizing individuals in buses for demonstrating the expected behaviors. And at Claraburg Baker, a kindness challenge was implemented to help revisit school-wide expectations and reinforce acts of kindness. The kindergarten through second grade students selected a random act of kindness for school-based support staff such as bus drivers, custodians, and teacher assistants. The third through fifth graders took a more community-centered approach and chose projects that would impact individuals outside of Claraburg Baker, such as firefighters, soldiers, and the Humane Society. A kindness tree was placed in the entryway of the school with pictures and descriptions of each of the projects and invited guests were able to hear about the projects from the students. Our goal in implementing this framework is simple, to establish a positive school culture that appropriately supports students by meeting each one where he or she is and providing the appropriate level of supports that allows each child to be successful. This is accomplished through common expectations, common vocabulary, and common practices. So what does this look and feel like for our students and staff? I am honored to have Jennifer Smith and Marie Vallone from James River Elementary and Howard Townsend from Jamestown High School with me this evening to share their work. We will begin with James River.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. I'm Marie Vallone, I'm the Assistant Principal at James River Elementary School, and this is Jen Smith, she's our school counselor. And we have been excited and working over the last two years with our MTSS team to roll out our school-wide expectations and procedures. Our James River Dolphins have been taught how to show FLYP behaviors in all areas of our building. FLYP is an acronym that describes our students who show characteristics of being focused, independent, positive, and positive in the classroom, hallways, cafeteria, playground, and on the bus. When students are caught showing FLYP behaviors, they can earn tickets daily. These tickets are redeemed for tangible or non-tangible items such as lunch with their teacher or to purchase trinkets from the dolphin cart. Students are also acknowledged monthly for positive behavior and exhibiting I B attitudes such as empathy and cooperation. A student can receive a Dynamic Dolphin sticker, a charm, an I B charm, and has their picture posted in the hallway bulletin board, showing their behavior that they have exhibited and announced on the morning news. Lastly, all students who show FLYP behavior the entire month attend monthly school celebrations, which have included a dance party in the gym, karaoke, ice cream, just to name a few.
So in addition to having common expectations, we use a common language and have common practices to establish a positive culture and climate within our school. Our staff was trained in the zones of regulation curriculum to help students identify and regulate their emotions. Teachers help students to recognize which color zone they are feeling and to use coping strategies or tools such as deep breathing to help themselves move back into the green ready-to-learn zone. A new option for students provided by a grant from the WJCC Schools Foundation is the use of the classroom calming corner where students self-select to visit in order to use calming tools so they can then focus on their learning. Students also have the opportunity to share which zone they are feeling each day as part of their class's morning meeting. Teachers facilitate daily morning meetings to help build a caring classroom community. Every morning, each class joins together in a circle to greet one another, share their thoughts and feelings, do a group activity, and go over the day's agenda. Morning meetings help to build relationships and set the tone for a positive learning
It starts off when we all come down to the carpet after the news. Then we say hello to each other, whoever's next to us, and sometimes we do like a handshake, like we do a high five. Then after the circle goes around, we have this little item that we hold and we say our feelings, and it's either red, yellow, blue, green, or sparkle, which sparkle is one of our classmates made up. It's better than green.
Our year started out with one student sharing something each day so they could bring something in to share about, and the kids got to ask questions. And I just started the happy face, sad face jars. Now they're getting a chance to talk about things that bug them or that make them sad and things that make them happy during the day. And we always end with an activity and then our message. So it's been a great way for them to learn how to play with each other and communicate and to talk about our feelings. We can use what happens at morning meeting to talk about problems that come up during the day, so it has helped a lot. I think it's built a lot of friendship.
Here is where we see how our initiatives positively impact the culture and climate of our school. Our MTSS interventions and efforts are tied to the overall improvement of our attendance rate. In addition, in terms of discipline, our work, in our work, we have seen significant decreases in the number of incidences and a significant decrease in the number of our out-of-school suspensions. Go ahead, you can go to the next question. Thank you. Overall, we are seeing many positive changes as a result of the work that we are all doing together in our school.
Now, additional MTSS interventions that we have begun and plan to expand on include check-in, check-out, and restorative approaches. Check-in, check-out allows identified students to check in with their staff person each morning to review behavioral goals and start the day out in a positive way. Students then check out with the same adult at the end of each day to receive encouragement and rewards for meeting their goals. Lastly, we have begun working with students to restore relationships with their peers as well as adults through this restorative approach of dialogue circles where students can share their perspectives and feelings and work towards solving problems peacefully. Now Jamestown High School will share their story.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Howard Townsend, one of the Assistant Principals at Jamestown High School. Student voice sits at the center of Jamestown High School's MTSS efforts this year. Students are active participants with their learning and are integral in creating a safe learning environment. With valuing student achievement comes acknowledging the importance of student voice. At Jamestown High School, the MTSS team emphasized identifying and trying to understand violations that fall into the category of inappropriate language and conduct. That particular violation seemed to affect classroom instruction and climate the most. The team took a two-pronged approach to understanding these behaviors. First, the team wanted to learn what inappropriate language and conduct looked like in our diverse classrooms. The team provided support for the faculty with understanding the function of behavior, why a student does what they do. The faculty and staff recognized that the referral system identified unwanted behaviors but did not give insight into what needs a student may have or specific strategies to address those needs. Through data collection, the MTSS team seeks to identify the behavioral and academic needs to support students and the faculty. The second approach looked to receive feedback from students on what these behaviors look like to them. The work led the team to create a diverse advisory team that looked at data and provided feedback to the faculty and administration of the school. The Flight Crew derives its name from the student-created acronym of terms that exemplify the values of Jamestown students. Focus, leadership, inspiration, global awareness, honor, and tolerance. The Flight Team created, the MTSS team created the Flight Crew to be representative of Jamestown with regard to race, ethnicity, student athletes, artists, club members, quiet students, leaders, students overly represented in the discipline data, and students who have never violated the code of conduct at all. The faculty nominated a host of students, and the MTSS team invited the students to join. The team analyzes academic and behavioral data that our faculty uses at our meetings. Unlike the SCA or other student leader groups, the Flight Crew only serves to give feedback. Let's see how the feedback guides faculty and the administration in decision-making.
Flight Crew, we decided that we wanted to hear the students' voices. So we could try to fix problems all day long, but ultimately, this is their school, not ours. So the best way to try to fix these problems is to see what they can do because the only way to get a great solution about something is different perspectives. I didn't know that we would have serious conversations like this, so I guess I was surprised that they really wanted to have our opinion, I guess I was saying, that they cared on our opinion.
Thing I like best about the Flight Crew is it's the real truth. The students are going to tell us exactly what they feel. They don't, they don't sugarcoat it. They tell us what is actually going on in the school and how they feel about it, and that's what I love.
Now, since I'm in it, I can tell like my peers about it, and so now it's like they want to be involved in it.
And so now it's like they want to be involved in it. And it's like bringing them more aware. And they're like, oh, I didn't even know that they, they like, some people thought that like our administration doesn't care. And I'm like, no, they do care. Like this is what this group is for, and this is what we're trying to do.
Some of the things I've gotten out of it, or I get to hear other people's points of view, like even the staff and stuff, like when I'm like, why, why didn't they do it this way? I'm like, oh, that's why.
They have brought some issues to, you know, the surface about just school safety and things that have been happening lately, you know, that's always on our minds. So from a teacher standpoint, I've definitely seen some solutions that have come about because of these conversations.
Gives me an idea of how to talk with like other people and get, and solve problems.
An example of a real truth that the Flight Crew shared involved restroom passes. Jamestown has color-coded its hallroom restrooms to correspond to passes that are assigned in the classroom. The initiative strove to curtail the amount of wandering about the hallways. When asked about the effectiveness of the passes, the Flight Crew agreed that the passes limited the wanderings but also made them feel alienated in their own school. The students said that the confrontation between the faculty and them in the hallway made them feel as if they had done something wrong. This information helped guide a discussion with the faculty about our actions and the different perspectives of them. The faculty talked about ways to acknowledge students in the hallways instead of confronting them. The faculty reviews and analyzes the monthly behavior data at meetings. The group practices with establishing student motivation and needs from the discipline data. At the beginning of the year, the faculty analyzes standards of learning testing, advanced placement testing, and other academic data points for strengths and areas for growth. The MTSS team employs the same procedures for negative behaviors documented through our referral system. The Flight Crew gives the faculty and administration focused group feedback. The online and lunch surveys give the MTSS team an overview of the student ideas and thoughts. But the MTSS team lacks the ability to probe deeper using those tools. The Flight Crew feedback gives the faculty and administration a deeper perspective of student life at Jamestown. Jamestown's discipline data shows some progress with decreasing the amount of time students spend out of school due to inappropriate conduct and language. However, we see an increase in the number of office disciplinary referrals. Some next steps in analyzing our data is to identify trends of when and where these incidents occur, create clear, school-wide expectations, and strengthen communication with our families and students with regard to what these expectations look and feel like to them. Our next steps. Currently, Jamestown is piloting a mentoring program with faculty members in a trial set of students. The MTSS team interviewed teachers and students to create matches that fit the needs of our students. Thank you.
So where do we go next? As a division, we will continue to support our schools at their various phases of implementation. We are also beginning tier-two and tier-three planning and implementation as well as starting the integration of the academic intervention levels. We will continue to build understanding of the MTSS framework with our staff, students, and families. With MTSS, we are talking about things that are more than just points of data. This is about culture, it's about climate, it's about building capacity. Implementation of a systems process such as MTSS can often take years to do well. We are embracing this important work as we continue our implementation process. Thank you for allowing us time this evening. We will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's bourgeois. Sonbi?
Two comments. So I just wanted to acknowledge Jamestown, the importance of identifying what inappropriate contact, conduct is, and so just making sure that all the faculty are on the same page is so important because everyone has their own idea of what's appropriate and what's not. And so I just accolades for recognizing the importance of that. And then for James River, I was wondering if you could give a little bit more information with regard to the data, like there was no change with certain subgroups, and so wondered if you had some more insight into that? If we could go, can we go back?
Go back to that screen, sure.
We hope so.
We hope so.
Yeah, really. It's icy.
Out-of-school suspensions.
While we're getting the data, the whole purpose of MTSS is that each school talks about what good behavior looks like and, and that the faculty, there's a whole team that, that creates those expectations for students. And everybody gets on board with it, and that's the whole, that's the whole purpose behind it.
And our children too as well have had opportunities to role-play what FLIP behavior looks like and, and what it, what it doesn't look like so that they, they could model it, the right behaviors in the, in the classrooms and in the hallways. We have some places where you don't see any changes. We have not had any significant numbers at all. Our numbers are very small in those areas, like two or three, three children specifically. The, the biggest, the, the most impressive for us, working in our team, is our decreases of our incidences and the large decreases in our, in our suspensions. And that's due to the work that we have been doing with MTSS and just the, the whole team, the whole staff, and all the children just really being on board with it. We're living and breathing it and speaking it and sharing it with each other. Another wonderful piece that came out of MTSS too with the team is we've created ways for our parents to be even more involved than they are. Our parents are often involved through our emails that our teachers do, they're involved in when they come to, for conferences. But MTSS has brought another piece of that to us because we also have the, an infraction sheet where the kids actually sit down and they, they talk about their, what they've done wrong, what they could do differently, how could they do it better? And that's really part of a reflection. And the reflection piece that the student does is the piece that goes home to the parents. So the teacher and the student connect together. And if need be, the administrators are involved sometimes, you know, depending on the incident. And we then also go over that incident sheet, that reflection piece that the students have written themselves. And from there, it goes home. And we call home, the teacher calls home, and all we do is encourage a conversation. It's just encouraging the conversation and the dialogue and letting the student be, be the leader in that and talk about their behaviors and what they've learned from it. So that has really impacted us in a very positive way and has changed our, our climate in a positive way.
Two, two follow-ups.
Yes, ma'am.
So the forty-six percent increase? Can we speak to that?
That, yes. That is what I was speaking of before where that's only really three, three, three of our children, so it's, it's less than, than the ten.
So just as a reminder, just, just as a reminder.
Exactly.
Anything that shows the less than is because it's identif, it's considered identifiable by the state standards. So that means that we're talking about ten students or less. So when you're dealing with a very small number, if I have one student and I go to two, it's a fifty percent. So, so that's, that's why some of those numbers look skewed. Is percentagealized.
One follow-up question.
Thank you.
I was just curious for Hispanic children, do you think language, a language barrier has anything to do with that or no?
We don't really see that now as a language barrier at all.
Okay. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, just the fact in the elementary grades, you have students engaged in real conversations, really talking with each other. That happens, I, I have long felt that that is the most neglected language art in, in schools. And it's, and to me, it's probably the most important one, is not just what to say but how to say it and, and when to say it and, and having students involved. A couple of things, a couple of questions I had was, and I got a sense of that from both the, the elementary school and the high school, is that how you are involving the students in identifying the inappropriate behavior or alternatives to that kind of behavior? And I'm interested, I'd like to hear from you as well because I think having students buy into something like this where they literally sort of sign the pledge at the end after they've identified and what are the ways to go is, is really important. And I, and I saw that, and I saw that in, but could you both just tell us a little more about how the students were involved in that exploratory and even the beginning implementation?
Sure.
So that they, because they ultimately have to believe it's their system, it's their, yeah, go ahead.
The acronym for FLIGHT came from the students at Jamestown High School. And the idea was that, that they had, like you said, they have to buy into this system and that we all have to understand we're in this building together and we have to operate. We're using the same cafeterias, same ha, same hallways. It's important that they buy in to how we're going to communicate with each other. When we talk about inappropriate language and conduct, it is a tough discussion about what's appropriate for one person, may not be appropriate for another one, but we also think about safety. What's appropriate for safety in a gym class where you've got bow and arrows, you know, and, and weights being lifted is diff, it's a different expectation than participation in an English class where you're sitting at a desk. So it's having these conversations that these expectations are going to change from room to room, but we have this kernel, this core belief that to be a Jamestown student, that you're going to be focused, you're going to show leadership. Now, that's going to look different in different settings, but the goal is focus, leadership, integrity, global awareness, honor, and tolerance. I hope that answered your question.
Absolutely. No, that, and I think people need to hear that, that, that the students are very much a part of this and, and, and if you start, if they, and if they start to believe in it, then, then you create a culture all across the school. So I, I applaud that. Thank you.
Ms. Hummel?
Yes, a couple, a couple kind of observations and then one question. I thought it was really interesting when you were talking about Jamestown and the students' reaction to the way they were approached during their passes. And I, I think that the level of respect that adults, the, the teachers and, and just the level of respect that they give to students sometimes can be reflected back to them. And if the students feel like they're not under constant suspiciousness, no, sus, sus-
Suspicion.
Suspension.
Suspicion, not suspension.
Sorry. Um, sorry. That, you know, it, it makes them feel like they belong more. And I think their behavior improves as a result, not to-
Can I piggyback just a bit on that? It's, it's almost like saying, okay, we got together and we talked about what are, what are not helpful behaviors for students to exhibit. Well, what are not helpful behaviors for teachers to exhibit? What do students feel that, you know, when a teacher does this or says that or in other words, it, it is a two-way street and, and, and you're right, there is kind of a reflection of that, but, and then, you know, and it, and having teachers, you know, recognize it as a group, not, this isn't an individual thing, but it's like, and it's almost like saying, okay, by golly, if you work as hard as you can to honor the ones that you identified those positive behaviors, we're going to do the same thing in terms of honoring those positive behaviors as your teachers. Because I, just from my experience, it's very much of a shock to a high school student or a group of them to ask them a question like that. What do you find that, because they always are thinking about themselves and what their behaviors are, so I just, I would, I would encourage that. And, and, because as you said, we're all in this together. So, that's great. Okay, that's all.
My, my other question is for the James River folks. And in the circle, when everyone's sharing their, their mourning or their happiness or their sadness, have you seen that it in, improves empathy amongst all of the children in the classroom to actually understand maybe that somebody's had a, is feeling sad because of something that they've shared? Has that improved overall empathy?
Yes.
One thing that we do try to incorporate in our conversations, conversations with children is always having them stop and think about how do you think the other person felt when that happened? Having them try to put themselves in that person's shoes. So I have heard kids say, not just in circles but in conversations as behaviors happen, that they, you know, and they start to think about how the other person feels and they would feel bad if it had happened to them. I, I do think that they're actually stopping and reflecting and maybe not have given that much thought before having the conversation with them. So I think it's initiating conversations that, with them and they're beginning to, to have some aha moments. I know they do enjoy hearing what zone their teacher is in. So, so that is, yes.
That is awesome.
The teachers are in the yellow zone and, you know, but we're using our tools. So we are modeling the same, same language and practices that we're teaching the kids.
And if I could just add to that, a student in the first grade was coming down the hall and they were walking to centers and screamed out to me that, "I showed empathy today when, when so-and-so said she shit, that her dog, you know, was not feeling well. I showed empathy." So they are trying to use the words, I'm not really sure if they completely know what they mean, but they are. And if I could just answer, Dr. Beers, your question before about, about how do we know that, that it's working? So we, we asked the same questions in our, in one of our monthly meetings that we have in MTSS. And we said, well, how do we know that it's working and the kids are excited about this or they're not excited or they're buying into this at all? So we came up with a student survey. And I'll let Ms. Smith talk about the survey that we put out to the students.
So we, we did base our interventions really on best practices, based on the restorative, responsive classroom, if you're aware of that, where morning meetings are a part of. So we did roll this out initially without the children's input, but we did come up with a pre-survey that we are going to be giving them again at the first week of June that asked them, you know, how they feel about or rate themselves, yes, sometimes, no, if they enjoy coming to school and having their, and being part of the morning meeting. We also asked questions about how they feel about getting tickets for FLIP behaviors. So we have, don't have the data right now to show you, but we're looking forward to seeing if there's any improvement in that.
It's just so important to start it in the, in the early grades because what they start to do is they'll, they'll just internalize, you know, the language and how they communicate with these, and, and somehow they'll survive middle school and go on, go on to high school. But, no, I, I, I think that's really important to, so that they feel like they're, you know, they're just, they're part of the process.
Mr. Kelly?
Jumping off from where Mrs. Hummel and Dr. Beers were about the, you know, the Jamestown restroom thing, the, when the, when the kids make these comments and then they see changes, that really gets them to buy in. And that's, that's critical to them to, for buying in. Couple of years ago, I went to the Classrooms Not Courts rooms conference, I had the privilege of doing that up in Richmond for a couple of days. And, and these are the types of strategies that they talked about. And it's really great to see us implementing those strategies and to see those, see those results coming through. When you look at the, the incidents and the out-of-school suspensions, I mean, you can't educate a kid if they're not in class. And, and having them in class and having them as- And having them in class and having them as part of the community is important. And these types of strategies and paradigms that facilitate that to happen, I think, are critical. So I appreciate the good work that we are doing, not only at Jamestown and James River, but also across the division and look forward to those being incorporated at other schools.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Young?
I don't know who this question is for, but, I mean, the end result, of course, is we want it to be proactive in school. So I think this is going to be for Ms. Buisoir. But the end game, especially at the end of high school, is we want to produce citizens who are going to go out into the workforce or go on to school where they know how to act, whatever normal is. But, I mean, when you think about encouraging students to talk, and I agree with that totally, but how do you think that's going to change when they're out in the workforce and they're, they have a boss who really doesn't care how they feel? I mean, that's a concern of mine.
I think the power in what schools like Jamestown are doing right now and James River is being able to help the students learn how to have a voice in a respectful way. And they may not always get the response they want, but they're understanding that they are a part of that organization and that they are valued. And, you know, I just think that that's a really powerful lesson for us to teach them. You know, they really are working. I mean, you hear Jamestown talking about really clearly defining what inappropriate language or conduct looks like. You know, that those types of levels of understanding are going to transfer to the workforce. So I really do think that they're giving them some very specific skill sets.
I am concerned. I mean, I like the fact that it's very proactive and I think that's so critical. I am concerned about translation into work ethic and other behaviors which are going to be necessary for our students to be successful, so.
And this really is the framework for providing those supports and those opportunities to learn. We still have that other side of my other hat, which is that code of conduct that I'll be bringing next month. So that accountability measure is still there, but it really is a look, learning to look at each incident and is this an opportunity to learn and teach while still holding accountable? Or, you know, it's our increasing our understanding that just giving a consequence isn't going to guarantee that we're going to get a different result the next time. And so really, it's incorporating a more comprehensive approach to how we address these things.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I would like to build on what Mr. Kelly said about classrooms, not courtrooms. That's something that I would highly recommend anyone attending. I don't know, it was a governor's initiative, so I don't know if the new governor is going to be continuing that or not.
We have not heard yet if it's going to be held this year or not. It's typically in July, so as soon as we get information, we will certainly share that.
If there's room at the table, I would encourage members that are, you know, if there's enough room to go, because it was incredibly valuable. And I don't think this was mentioned earlier in the presentation. If it was, I apologize for missing it. But can you talk a little bit about how this is an evidence-based framework, that this is, that it's proven to work?
So just as a reminder, we're actually part of a cohort through the Virginia Department of Education. They call it the Virginia Tiered System of Supports. It went through three different name changes, so we stayed with MTSS because that's what we had started. But it really is a very structured approach to creating this framework where there's ongoing training that's provided by the state. All of it is evidence-based practices. We have numerous trainings this summer. We have schools that are going to advanced tiers training in Charlottesville. We have schools and division-level team members that are going to training. The end of July, beginning of August, it's being hosted at William &amp; Mary that's going to look at embedding, again, reinforcing tier one, but also looking at restorative approaches and culturally responsive approaches. So it's really a very systematic way of building that understanding of all those considerations that go into, how do we respond to students behaviorally, academically, emotionally, but also how do we build the capacity of our staff in doing that?
I think my favorite piece of this approach is that it's really a no assumptions approach to working with students. I mean, they, students come to us from so many different places, and so we can't assume that their norms are our norms. And so starting from a blank slate and building that together, I think, is really critically important.
So I'll give you the Jell-O mold story, because it makes sense to everybody. Cara McCullough, who is now with T-TAC, when she first starts this training, she talks about Jell-O. And you think about Jell-O and you think about how it wiggles and it changes shape and that sort of thing. But especially if you think about, like, Jell-O that has fruit in it and all the pieces look different. And it's about, it's, MTSS is about taking all those pieces of fruit and holding them together in a way that creates a complete process. So it really is about all those different pieces coming together.
And then lastly, I think, you know, this is a huge piece of prevention, whether it's prevention of suspension or helping to support, preventing serious behavioral health issues later on in life, creating that sense of community, I think is critically important to the mental health of our students as they age through the system. And with that in mind, you know, given this is an evidence-based framework, given that it's a piece of the prevention puzzle, are there, does this lead to more positions being needed in terms of counselors, in terms of social workers? I mean, if kids are going around the circle and saying something that's upsetting them, sometimes that's going to have to be referred somewhere. And so can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, thank you. We are seeing a growing need for that across all of our schools. We, some of the school divisions in the state have actually implemented another aspect of MTSS. It's called Project Warrior. It's a pilot piece that really is looking at very purposefully incorporating that mental health component into it, which makes perfect sense. And absolutely, one of the components of that is needing additional staff to be able to support those efforts. And it's about being able to increase the responsiveness to the identified needs. So yes, that is going to be a consideration moving forward.
Anything else?
The only thing I'd say is, is it possible to implement MTSS in Washington, D.C.? Because I think all three branches of government could so benefit from learning how to talk to each other. That's all. But I, this is really, I want to come back, I want to come back to that, that one thing I said at the very beginning. It's the talking. We always, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on listening, and listening's important, you know, in terms of engaging. But encouraging students to talk about, you know, what they feel, what kind, you know, what those behaviors are, how to deal with those behaviors, and having them talking with each other is just, I can't tell you how important that is. It's absolutely crucial. It really is.
Agreed. Well, anything else? Ms. Buisoir, Ms. Fellow, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Townsend, thank you very much for being here tonight and thank you for the conversation. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Heron.
I could just, Madam Chair, just thank Ms. Buisoir for our leadership of this whole piece of the puzzle. She's done an excellent job in really moving this along. And we're just at the beginning of a journey, but I think it's a very important one.
That brings us to the policy section of our meeting. Eight point zero one, retire policy, IIBA, teacher aides. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Paul is going to bring this policy to the board this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. A little anticlimactic, but here I am to bring you forward one policy for your consideration. Tonight, we're seeking to retire policy, IIBA, teacher aides. There is no corresponding VSBA policy and no surrounding divisions have a similar policy. This is the only policy in our policy book that addresses the duties of a specific category of instructional personnel. And the cross-referenced policies, GDC, professional staff positions, and GDD, support staff positions, were both retired in the fall of 2017. Counsel has reviewed and supports this recommendation.
Any questions?
Is there, I'm assuming it's in the job description, but that identifies what are the areas of responsibility they can assume and those things that they're not really qualified to do?
Yeah, it's all, all of it is in HR and all of the job descriptions. This was just an unusual policy identifying a specific position.
It's going to, it would pick up.
Position will continue, still be valued, still have a job description, it just won't have a policy.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Paul. So this will migrate over to our next board meeting on consent agenda. That brings us to our action items for this evening, our action item, nine point zero one, personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Oso, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Motion passes. That brings us to board member comments. Ms. Taylor, do you have anything this evening?
I do. Surprise, surprise. It seems that spring is the time I can finally get out and do some things. So on April 25th, I had the pleasure, along with the rest of the board, of attending the Teacher of the Year ceremony. And I always truly enjoy celebrating the accomplishments of our teachers. And as Dr. Heron mentioned earlier, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. So some of the most memorable people in our lives, we spend so much time with them, have been our teachers. So make sure that you thank a teacher this week.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Kelly?
I'll piggyback on that a little bit, and I really enjoy hearing the stories of our teachers and the video that they had at the Teacher of the Year ceremony. That was, that's always one of the highlights of the spring. I had the privilege of attending Tarzan at War Hill. I thought that was an excellent musical. I really, I just enjoyed everything about it and the simplicity and the diversity of the cast. It was just wonderful. As we get towards the end of the year, it starts, we start to have some of those events that are really fun to go to, the retirements and recognitions, the GED completer ceremony, and our graduations, and just seeing the excitement of our students as they come through and complete their K through 12 experience. And the GED completers who have struggled to come through and earn that credential, I think, is just great and always good to see the, to celebrate the careers of our teachers and support staff who are retiring and moving on and recognize those who've been here for a long time with their recognition, their service pins. So I always look forward to this time of the year and kind of seeing the fruits of the labor, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Young?
Yes, I guess I'll just piggyback on about the Teacher of the Year. I enjoyed that ceremony and it's amazing. We have such high-quality teachers and I want to congratulate and thank our teachers in the division as this is Teacher Appreciation Week and just tell them how much I do appreciate them. And as a member of the board, I'm very aware of the contribution they make. I attended the support staff award ceremony. I enjoyed that and that was very well done and was wonderful to see the, in the high regard that our staff members, our support staff has held. I also had the opportunity of attending Link Five, and I'm glad I don't have any of the diseases they talked about. They did an excellent job and, oh, the one, Link Five, was about, was about starting a business. That was a real-life experience. And I want to thank Mrs. Cook for buying me popcorn and supporting those students in that experience, because as I talked to some of them, they, I think they had an idea of what it meant to start a business and it sounds real easy, but it's not. And I think they discovered that. And lastly, I had the opportunity of attending Mary Poppins at Lafayette High School and I went to learn how to do the tap dancing that they did. That was pretty awesome. They received a standing ovation and it was deserved, very deserved. And I also attended Tarzan, and Tarzan is my very favorite character in the whole world. And I love the performance and I want to congratulate that, the cast for bringing Tarzan to life. And the only thing I didn't hear because of the applause at the end was I didn't get to hear the "Ah, ye, ah" that Tarzan as well noted for. So, but I did want to congratulate them. I've enjoyed all of our plays this year and want to thank the hard work of those teachers who promoted them and made those possible.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I just want to really, I spoke an awful lot tonight, but there, just, but a couple of things. I very much want to thank and continue to support. They are incredible teachers, highlighted with the Teacher of the Year, but there are lots of Teachers of the Year. There are so many outstanding teachers. I also was really happy to and honored to be in the same room with so many support staff who have done such incredible jobs. And again, there are many others that we haven't seen, that we don't see, that really keep the place running, all aspects of it. And I want to make that point. And also, our central office staff and our principals and our assistant principals, who don't always get the recognition that teachers and students get, those are not easy jobs and there are lots of challenges. And I just have utmost respect for those of you who are engaged in making lives better and more productive for our students.
Thank you. Ms. Hummel?
I brought props. I just wanted to say I've got my Mary Poppins prop and my Tarzan prop and thought, you know, it's a lot of work that goes into putting these productions on. And kudos to our theater departments. I also would like to learn how to play to tap dance, but I think it's, I'm past that now. I would, on a more serious note, echo what everyone else has said, but also during our slideshow several times, you see we are WJCC. And nowhere does that mean more than in the sad times when WJCC comes together to help in times of tragedy. So in addition to celebrating all of the wonderful things that go on in our schools every day, I also just want to thank our WJCC teachers and staff for being a family during the hard times, too.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Onby?
Obviously, the spring is a very busy time with concerts and musicals and teacher and staff appreciation and pending ceremonies. And I just feel lucky to be able to be a part of that, because these events showcase what makes our division great. And so that's our teachers, our students, our staff, and our administrators. Want to wish our students good luck as they move into their AP exams and SOLs and their finals. And wanted to give a shout out to our PTAs and our PTSAs for supporting and appreciating our teachers and doing that kind of behind-the-scenes legwork to make everyone have a great week.
Thank you. I would like to echo Ms. Hummel's comments regarding coming together during difficult times and just wanted to say that our thoughts and prayers are with the Toano family and we're thinking of you, so. Also wanted to thank everybody around this table for being at the Teacher of the Year ceremony. I appreciate this board's constant commitment to celebrating the excellence that we have here and the people who make us excellent, the teachers and also the support employees. Those were both wonderful events, celebrating wonderful people. But to Dr. Beers' point, there are so many people who are, do amazing work every day in our division. And then also wanted to say Mary Poppins and Tarzan were great. I was not able to attend, is it Big Fish? Big Fish, unfortunately, but I'm sure it was excellent as well. And I also went to a couple site visits for the School Health Initiative program, and I think Ms. Onby and Mrs. Young were there, too. It was a cafeteria tasting, we got to eat collard chips, right? Yeah? Which were really tasty. And...
You say so.
Yes, they were good. And then also saw some after-school, after-school programs, Running Club and some other activities at Clara Birds. So that was one...
Gardening.
Gardening, that's right. Oh, yeah, that garden was phenomenal. And then also the Link Five event was great. And I also wanted to just thank the PTAs, not only for their support of teachers during Teacher Appreciation, but also for their advocacy for supporting our budget. Also, the same goes for citizens in our community and the Education Association. Also, the same goes for citizens in our community and the Education Association. Really appreciate your, um, uh, talking about how important it is to support the schools. So, thank you very much for, for helping us do that. Is there anything else?
I just want to, I forgot to, uh, say that Lafayette High School had breakfast for our military students, students of the military, and I attended that. It was wonderful. It was, I think that was the first time they'd done that and, uh, talked to some parents and, um, I'm very thankful for the military and for their support, so.
Anyone else? Okay. With that, upcoming events, the Special Education Advisory Committee meets on May 10th at 6:30 in the James City County Community Center. The Student Advisory Committee meets on May 16th at 3:00 PM in the Media Center at War Hill High School. Uh, the Retirement and Service Pen Ceremony, uh, is the 17th of May at 5:00 PM in Montaco Woods Room of the School of Education at William &amp; Mary. The Policy Committee meets on May 23rd at 8:15 in the morning here in the Annex, um, in Room 309. And the School Liaison Committee meets on May 25th at 7:30 AM here in the Annex in Room 300. I just said 5:10. Yes, CAC meets on 5:00. Yeah. Uh, and then our upcoming meetings, sorry, this computer's really slow. Okay. Our next meeting is next Tuesday on the 15th of May. Uh, we begin that work session at 4:30, um, on, uh, in Building F of James City County. And then the regular meeting begins at 6:30 in the boardroom in Building F. And then our first June meeting is on the 5th of June at 6:00 PM in the Annex here, Central Office Room 309, and followed by a work session at 6:30, also on June 5th, here in Room 300. With that, the next thing we do is set the agenda for the next regular meeting, everything that we discussed for action, plus our policies. We will be, uh, hopefully adopting a budget. If we're not able to do that at the next meeting, we have a, an extra one in reserve if needed. Um, and then we will also have the contract book and the salary schedule. So, with that, unless there's anything else, adjourn the meeting.